Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Monday, March 22 at 6:30 PM. I will call the meeting to order at 6:33. Correct. That's 1.1. 1.2 Chairman's additions or deletions? I have none. Are they, are there any that I should know of? Beth?
No, all set.
Okay, thank you so much. The board was, 1.3, the board was sent our minutes of March 8 and for review, and then today we got one that was amended by comments made. Are there any other comments about the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 8, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 8, 2021.
Before we do that, I apologize because I called the meeting to order, but I forgot the roll call.
Thank you.
I am not perfect, close, but not quite there. So can I have a roll call vote, please, of the board members?
Carol Hofstas?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, present.
And Laura Schiffern, present. Thank you, guys. All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes of March 8, 2021.
I second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for a roll vote.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you. So we are at now 6:35. We have a public hearing at 7:00. So let's try to take care of some stuff during our work session. 1.1, 2021 Townsend Master Plan Update.
I don't see anybody from Master Plan here as of yet.
Okay, well, look at that, David. We're gonna, we're gonna address you now anyway. 3.2, 2021 Townsend Master Plan Update Water Chapter Review, and that was for the board members. I did review it, and I'm sure the other board members have as well, and I was more concerned about, David, what your thoughts were, and has the Board of Commissioners reviewed the water chapter?
Well, it's not quite done yet, but they, they did. I made, I made changes to it. Then it came back, and I made a couple slight changes, but basically it's a 20-year plan.
Okay.
That, uh, the first year, the first two years is actually getting the water, which is, um, right now, we're in the process of redoing the well, which is right now, Main Street, we can do 20 gallons a minute. When we're done, within the next year and a half, we'll do six hundred gallons a minute, which is a tremendous amount of water. And then we'll put Cross Street back in service.
Okay, and this is, this is all outlined in what you're, you're putting together, right?
Correct. Then year three is going to Emery, and Emery, South Row and South Harbor, and looping those two. Because right, right now, most of our water is from Witches Brook area, and there's only one way in and out. If that pipe breaks, we lose most of our water. And so the town, the town will be out of water. So by looping Witches Brook into Emery, it creates, it rocks off all the dead ends, plus that whole area is high in arsenic for, um, for the people in South Row, and it gives them an alternative. And it'll add more customers, and it'll help the town automatically. And that, that's up to year eight. Year eight will be without loans, and then we're gonna go up to Lunenburg Road, put a tank in, and expand, expand the system significantly. So when we're done, we'll, we'll add four to 500 homes to this system.
Thank you much. I just wanted to say something if I could. Madam Chair, the agenda item 3.2 actually is in reference to the document received from the Master Plan Committee, and I believe what Mr. Vajant is talking about is the Water Master Plan, right? Am I right, David?
Right. Is it that you're asking me?
I'm sorry, but it, it really is two different things, so I just wanted to clarify that. I know that, um, what we're, what we had, what the board had was to review a document that was shared by the Master Plan Committee, who's writing Townsend's Master Plan. And so simultaneously, the Water Department has a master plan under, in progress too, so I can see how it got confusing. But yeah, so David has not seen the document that the Planning Board reviewed, because the only the document went to the Planning Board, but not to anyone else, because the Planning Board requested it. Remember that you had
That was my, that was my question when I read this, okay? Because this doesn't mean much to me unless David and the Water Commissioners have input to this.
Right.
Like, I can read this and say, oh, yeah, well, this sort of looks like a plan and outline some stuff, but what, and what my next question was gonna be was, is what David just told us part of this plan? Because it seems to me that the Master Plan should be looking out at least five, 10, 15 years, and who could possibly write this chapter but the Water Commissioners?
Right.
I'm an engineer, and I'm in water, so the person to write it would be me, because I have expertise.
Right, right. And, um, Beth, I I guess I shouldn't have assumed, but I certainly would, would have wanted David to see this. It's not a long document by any means.
No, mine's a little more detailed.
What?
Mine's a little more detailed.
Yes, I know. And, and what you were saying, I believe, should be in this document. So my feedback to, and I'm speaking for myself and not for the board, and I certainly will ask Chaz and Carol to chime in, would be that I think that what our plan should be including is what our Water Commissioners and Superintendent see for the future of Townsend.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, we're not experts, we're engineers. We're going by what the professionals feel should be done for this town, and I don't know anyone who is is Todd Malanson still on the Master Plan Committee?
Yes, I believe he wrote that chapter that, yeah.
He wrote the chapter. Okay. Well, I, I really think David should see this. And, um, for us to have any input, I think we need input from David. In my opinion. Chaz?
Um, I, here's where I chime in, right?
Yes, you may chime in.
Okay.
Start chiming.
My, my initial thought is that this is a good base document in regards to kind of what we need to look at. I agree with you 150,000% that David needs to be looking at all of this. Here's my concern. These chapters have to then dovetail to what he's writing for his master plan for the Water Department. So the Master Plan needs to tie into what the Water Department is writing, the Master Plan needs to tie into the, the Housing Chapter needs to tie into the Housing Authority, and so on and so on. Economic Development needs to tie into what Planning Board is doing. There, there's a lot of pieces to this. I, I would like to see, on this document, if we can, share this with, with David and the Water Department, and then take their information, and then be able to submit that to the Master Plan. I think that with his input, with pieces of what they're writing for their master plan, we can add for our chapter in, in this Master Plan, so that at least it all is congruent, and that's my major concern.
That's the conversation we had earlier. And David, is it all right to go ahead and share that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that latest update is what I am gonna share with everybody. I have kind of been waiting, because I didn't, I knew you were working on it, and I didn't send anything out before you gave that final approval, but, and you say there are very minor changes that may still happen, but for the most
There's one, there's one change on New Pittsburgh Road, where I'm, I want to change it to Battery Road, the new Battery Road, because there's no water on it. I need to put a bigger pipe on it. Instead of disrupting people, I can put, I can bring new people in, and we don't, we don't have to worry about water being in the way.
Great.
So Beth, what, what I'm hearing is that what David is already helping with the edits to this document, so that we then can submit that back to the Master Plan? Is that what you're saying?
Nope. David has not seen the document that was submitted to the Planning Board, that is the document you're talking about tonight. It has a Master Plan for the Water Department only, and he shared that with me today. It has been updated since he came on, you know, he's, he's been employed with the town. He did a lot of revisions to it, so I'm aware it's been there, but I wanted to make sure that he was able to, to make his revisions before that goes on. Now, that being said, there's a number of maps in there that may be very helpful, you know, to the Master Plan, too.
That was my next question.
Exactly. I, I will email that out, now that I have, you know, the permission to do so, to the board tonight and to the Master Plan Committee.
Okay. Can you also email to David the draft of the chapter for the Water Department that the Planning Board has received review?
Um, I don't, I mean, I'm okay with that. I just don't know if the Planning Board wants to start, you know, like, from my understanding, it was the Planning Board requested chapters as they became available to review. But if you extend that review process outside of the Planning Board, I'm just not sure if that's, if that's a good approach without
Without checking first, I agree.
Checking with who?
The Master Plan Committee.
The Master Plan Committee. They're the authors at this point, right?
Yeah, but our feedback, our, my feedback, okay, would be okay, I read this. I'm not an water engineer, so you could put almost anything in front of me, and if, if it's, if it's correct, as far as not any misspelling, or, you know, comma, or a misspelled word, I don't have any knowledge, and I don't think most of the Master Plan Committee does either, of what this should really say. So as a Planning Board member, I feel I want the input of the Water Superintendent as to what he thinks about this chapter, because if this were to come to me as part of the Master Plan, and the Planning Board is the final say of the Master Plan.
You'd want the same thing.
I would want the same thing.
Yes, yes, and, and I also believe that the protocol in, in Beth is what Beth is talking about as well. So I, and I agree with you too, Lori, but I, I just want to be able to make sure that, you know, this, this goes along with me saying that we really should be working in conjunction with all the other boards. This is very important, especially with the Master Plan Department, document. So might I suggest that we reach out to the Master Plan Committee? They're not here tonight, so they can't answer directly. I would like to be able to ask them if we could extend this document to the Water Department to get their feedback in it, so that they in turn can submit feedback direct to Master Plan Committee, and if we need to vote on that, I'll, I'll be more than glad to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll entertain that motion.
And I, I have so
Wait a second.
Okay, so to the motion, or a question in reference to our agenda, where I have a question for Beth. 3.1 is the Master Plan Update, Master Plan Committee. That's on our agenda. Were they invited to, to make an update this evening?
Yeah, they have a standing invitation, and I sent them the Planning Board agenda when it posted. It was a while ago, but I haven't heard anything.
Okay, because we certainly could ask them the question this evening, I think.
Yeah.
Or their representative, so
And their next meeting is the 25th.
Correct. That's been posted.
Okay, yep.
Okay, and when is not to go off topic, but when is our next meeting? April 5. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you for that motion, and David, thank you for the report. We appreciate you being here with us and enlightening us to what your plan is anyway, and hopefully we can work with, or maybe you can, Beth, can you pass along information for the Master Plan Committee meeting?
Sure.
To David, and maybe he can have a discussion with them on the 25th, but we'll certainly take it up again on April 5.
Thank you.
All right. 3.3, so we still have another 10 minutes. 3.3, Age-Restricted Development Zoning By-Lot Amendment Report to Town Meeting.
Yeah, there's, there's some news there. Both of these so there will be, I'm sorry, I had a review from the Building Commissioner, Eric Chartrand, as well as Rick Metcalf from the Board of Health. Both were excellent reviews. This was, of course, after, you know, Town Council had all the revisions were incorporated from Town Council's review. Now, the public hearing was closed, but I just wanted to get another, you know, another scan of the document, and very, very promising. I think in your folders are a couple of comments from Rick Metcalf. So I got a chance to see them. Great, great.
Yeah, I did. I saw them, and I I saw Eric's as well. Yeah.
So, I mean, overall, very good. I will also just mention that I did receive a question as to the possibility of reducing the lot size to one acre. So I have gone ahead and explored that, you know, scenario in preparation for the potential on Town Meeting Floor of
Okay.
discussing that or asking for that, so.
And that be amended on Town Meeting Floor?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, any part of it could be, I would imagine, sure. So I think, you know, in anticipation of that, I've asked for another Board of Health review, because I think that would be the biggest
Yeah.
right there.
Yeah. So As long as, as long as the lot would accommodate approval of the Board of Health
Yeah.
for septic, septic and water. Yeah, that's a very good thought, because that would certainly
It would be better for in-town properties, and that was the thing, one-acre lots, but the in-towns and only, not, you know, out in residential, but like the lot by the storage sheds or something. Somebody could have a one-acre lot in town with an old house and potentially reconstruct it, you know, use that one-acre lot for age-restricted, age-restricted housing, you know what I mean, like demo an old house and still be able to do this. So there's, you know, the Building Commissioner did say it's possible in terms of zoning to reduce it to one acre, but it would be in-town zoning areas, like the DCD. Yeah, walk to library and Town Common and that kind of stuff, so that doesn't really achieve what the Planning Board was, you know, really trying to do.
Okay.
Would we, would we be able, I'm sorry, Lori, would we be able to talk with the Board of Health? So let's say it, the, this got amended on Town Hall in the Town Meeting, down to one acre? Would we need to have that cleared through the Board of Health?
Well, I'm actually Try to find that out first.
Do that now, yeah.
Before, later.
That's what I'm saying, we can do that before Town, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, you know.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
That will be prepared, and if it, you know, if it's a yes, then it's a yes, and if it's a no, then, you know, we'll have comments.
I'm sure it will come down to what is available for the septic.
Yeah, because there's no, no sewer, you know, so
Right, right.
So that Town Report still, you know, will have to be done. I don't know who wants to take that on, but
Oh, the report for the age-restricted?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I can throw that together.
Okay, I'll get you the details.
Okay.
Thank you, Chaz.
You're welcome.
And just another note, I did get a date, I believe it's the 16th of April, where it, there will be, the warrant will be locked down. So everything, you know, that's going into the warrant articles, the Planning Board has, is bringing forth, verbiage-wise and editing-wise, should be finalized by the 16th.
Okay.
We're pretty much there, though, as far as that's concerned, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, 3.4 Townsend Municipal We got five minutes. Do you want to update on that one?
Yeah, I think there, that, that one, I, there wasn't a lot of forward movement on, but what I did is I collected the items that you had asked for last time, and that is in a folder, and it, there's a lengthy action item list there. It's Table 7-1 that you can go through, and we can take up next time, you know, it can get a little more organized. And then there's just basically three documents in a folder that have to do with implementation of that plan, so that you just have them there to review. One of them is status update from the 2015 Hazard Mitigation Plan. And then that, you can review that at your leisure and look at, you know, the things, the progress that's been made and what still needs to be done. So I think at the next meeting, you know, after you have a chance to look at what, what we have to pull together, we can, you know, figure something out. We talked about education and meeting, introductory meeting with all boards.
Okay.
Or the core team.
Yeah, and the responsible staff and boards, so, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to welcome us, our Selectman Chairman, Veronica Cal. Nice to have you on the meeting, Veronica. Before we go into the public hearing, which will be in three minutes, Beth, do I have a statement to read for the public hearing tonight?
You don't have to. It's not required, so, but if you would like to, it's in the folder. It's, it's up to you. Yeah, it's a optional public hearing, but yeah, if you it's a notice that I made, so
No.
Okay.
I don't want to have to find it right now.
It's a purely optional service here, because it's not a zoning bylaw, so
Okay, uh, so let's see quickly, 3.5 Townsend MVP Program Core Team and MVP Action Grant. Do you want to update that one?
Yeah, so we have, I think that we're pretty much at the same place. The expression of interest form has been submitted, and I do have a meeting set up for Thursday. Is it Thursday? I'm sorry, Wednesday, with the Regional Coordinator at the State, Hillary King. At that point, we're just going to be going over general idea, you know, for the action grant application, which is very similar to the last one, with some, you know, changes in terms of how I don't have them listed out, but there are changes. They've changed the application process. They've changed the, a couple things that they are looking for in the application. So that is on Wednesday, and I send you all an invitation. That's that's where we're at there.
I am, just so that you know, I'm not able to make Wednesday.
Yeah.
I am not. Karen Chapman's also on. Hi, Karen, nice to see you.
Hi, Karen.
Yes?
Laura, could I ask a question about the MVP Grant? This is why I'm on here
Okay.
before the Wednesday meeting. Beth, my question is, the application last year, are we going to be going, and maybe we don't know the answer to this yet. Are we going to be going back out for letters of support and in-kind matches and that sort of thing? Because I or is that something undetermined at this point?
It's undetermined at this point.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, oh, it's 7 o'clock, okay. I was gonna say, Karen is here for the GLTA agreement, but it's 7 o'clock, so if you wanna
Yeah, it's 7 o'clock. So, um, we have a public hearing this evening for Scenic Roads Regular By-Lot Proposal, 2.1 on our agenda. So I will open the public hearing. I'd like a roll call of those present, please.
Carol Hofstas, present.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, present.
Thomas Ugo.
Beth, Veronica, all that are on the call, please.
Oh, Karen Chapman, MRPC, present.
Thank you, Karen.
Veronica Cal, citizen, present.
Thank you. Laura Schiffern, filling in for the chair, Vice Chair, present.
Madam Chair, I'm all queued up with the document, too, that if you want me to share it, I have it.
Thank you very much, and go right ahead.
Okay.
I don't know what I would do without Chaz. None of us would know what we would do without you, Chaz.
Right.
People used to say that to me, Chaz, so don't take it personally.
I, I don't. I'm following in your footsteps, Karen.
We still say that about you, Karen, even though you're not hearing it.
Truth, truth.
Your ears must be ringing a lot, is all I say. Okay, um, Chaz, do you want to take this over?
Um, Beth, do I need to take it over?
For Beth, go for it.
You can read it.
This is, this is the document that we received back from Town Council. Town Council made several changes to it. I personally have gone through it. I like the changes that that Town Council has put in it. I think it's, it's much more comprehensive than what we had in the last, the last draft. There has been consultation with the Tree Warden on several occasions. Beth had reached out and coordinated, and I think Eric had had a couple of comments and Uh, Beth had reached out uh, and coordinated, and I think Eric had had a couple of comments in regards to this as well. Uh, our Building Commissioner, correct, Beth, on that?
I don't think Eric had anything.
Not on one, I'm thinking of the, the other one. But um, uh, as far as I see, I'm, I personally am okay with the document as it stands right now.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I'm okay with the document as it's written.
Okay, so, um, Beth, do we have to go on any longer, or can I entertain a motion to approve this document?
Well, is there any other comments that we have from anybody that's here?
Yeah, you have a comment from, from the tree warden.
Okay, yes.
I compared this, this to the, the ones that I have, and uh, my uh, my question is, why do we need it? And number one, and number two, is a, at least from my own personal point of view, a glaring omission of the name tree warden in it, which is maybe that's your intent, I don't know.
I, I could be wrong, but I think when um, positions are stated in any of our bylaws or documents, they refer to the position and not um, any one person. So the person who would be responsible for this would be the tree warden. It would come under his guise as far as interpretation and getting opinions for.
All right, well, I guess that goes back to why do we need it?
This was something that the um, excuse me, this is something that our Chair had brought up. Um, it was brought to our attention that there were um, um, several um, or there have been rock fences um, that have been moved without um, uh, coming to the Planning Board in regards to this. There was um, several discussions that the Planning Board has had in regards to this. Um, as opposed to making sure, because the majority of the roads, actually all the roads in Townsend are um, part of the uh, Scenic Roads uh, Act. And um, uh, according to the conversations, or early on conversations, is the Planning Board wanted to uh, see if there were uh, reasons that we do need to add a bylaw to protect the stone walls that are run, um, that are running along the, the roads.
Yeah, I'm not concerned as much with the tree, with the, uh, with the, with the stone walls, with the wording involving the stone walls. I am more concerned about the wording involving trees and the tree warden, or lack of the tree warden.
And, and, and where, where exactly are you? Because I'm, I'm looking at, at D, uh, Public Shade Trees, and it also says, and also before the tree warden pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty seven.
The cutting and removal of trees in C two. Written approval by the Planning Board and after public hearing, blah, 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 and uh, no, just no word of, I mean, I, you know, I don't know much about walls, so that's fine, but I do know about trees. Excluding tree and from, yeah, removal or cutting of trees seems to me to be pertinent.
Correct, in, in C, so we're asking for your input.
That's what I'm giving you.
Right, so what, what would you like us to add for that in, in the C section, under application?
Original one, I looked at it to the, uh, the cutting and removal of trees, the scope of which is outside the responsibility of the tree warden as defined above. And, and B, it has um, within the towns right away or designated road, the tree warden in his designation may approve the cutting and removal of trees within the towns right away or designated roads. Following activities subject to a filing of an application with the Planning Board and written approval by the Planning Board, blah, blah, blah. And then it goes to B, the tearing down of stone walls, which I, again, have no um, comment on. But the cutting and removal of trees, the scope of which is outside the responsibility of the tree warden, which I'm not sure what, what, I asked Beth uh, about that, and, and the uh, response of at least the, 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 the other comment that I got, it just eliminated, it, it just eliminated the tree warden at all, all, altogether, rather. Not so much uh, you know, anything that, I was wondering, what trees were outside the responsibility of the tree warden? Meaning, could they be, you know, yard trees or what, whatnot? Instead of uh, clarifying that, it just eliminated the tree warden altogether.
In the document that you're saying you're reading, what, what document are you reading from?
Oh, let me see, this is forty, one forty-five ninety-one Scenic Roads, the one.
That's the current, current bylaw.
Right, this has been reviewed by Town Council. This has been, yeah, Town Council took that out, so this is his changes.
Why? Did he explain why?
Uh, yeah, we can pull that up. Chaz, can you pull that up in the comment, the one that has Town Council comments?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, there's your.
Yeah, I think I sent that to you, Don. There's a version that was sent with all the Town Council's comments on there, and I don't know if you're able to open it, but.
Um, if, take, if I do, if I put markups back on this, will they come back on this document, Beth?
Yeah, I would imagine they would. It's in the uh, cloud, so yeah, good idea.
I'm so glad you're doing this, Chaz.
I know, thank you. Show markup. Comments, yeah, let's see.
It's just, I mean, I don't see any comments in this. It's just, it's just, it's, the lines just, the, the words, the scope of which is outside the responsibility of the tree warden as defined above, is just, is, is uh, lined out. And uh, and there's some comments, there's some comments to the right of it.
There you go.
I don't know, it just says reworded, or it's very small, but.
So you have to look on screen, Don, because this is the one that, now, that doesn't look like all of his comments, though. Can you get show markup again, and let's see? Let's see if we can.
What am I looking for?
Insertions and deletions.
Yeah, check that as well. Hmm, that didn't do much. All right. Um, balloons? All reviews, balloons.
So all revisions in line?
Yep, you could do that, and then we'll see what happens. Oh, no, that's not helping, because his comments, I'm gonna get them in the email.
I don't see any, any.
I don't see his comments either, which is weird.
Yeah.
Let me try something else, uh.
Aren't those his comments under revisions on the left?
Oh, here's a, okay, I just sent you, Chaz, I just sent you uh, an email, and in it is a PDF of the um, of the bylaw with his comments. If you could open that one instead, sorry. Yeah, he sent over, it's a PDF, it should come to you in an email, like, pretty much right now, just sent it out. And the file is Draft Section One Forty-five Ninety-One Scenic Road Bylaw Proposal, redlined by AJC. And it's PDF, and then all the comments are in, in the balloons.
So it's the PDF?
Yeah, try that one, that would be. Yeah, might be helpful. Okay, yep, yeah, and let's see. I didn't see a comment by him about that, actually, so.
Yeah, because I'm
Yep.
Also looking at that.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't, you know, it just apparently was not a necessary part of. But you're definitely in section D. You're in D, Don, that would be important part. Yeah.
Is this sharing?
Yeah, he cleaned quite a bit, it looked like.
Right, so it doesn't address why that was, you know, stricken, the scope of which is outside the responsibility of the tree warden as defined above, but it's, he doesn't comment why that's stricken. Um, if you read the comments, so I am assuming it's because it was not needed in that section.
Um, so what, what are the implications on this? I mean, i- it's, the tree warden is the one that would be, that would need to approve the cutting of and removal of those trees, correct?
Yes.
So I, I think, but the tree warden is saying is that really should remain in there, and I kind of agree with that.
Well, doesn't D take care of that?
Yes, that's what it said now. It's a, it's a, it's a conjunction, it's a um, dual hearing, if you will. It's the tree warden and the Planning Board um, that would hold a, hold a public hearing congruently.
So before, before anything is decided by the Planning Board, the tree warden has to be a part of it?
Right.
Okay, well, that, that says the same thing then.
Exactly, yeah, the way that it's done now. But right now, it's a regulation, and this is a bylaw, which basically gives more credence to the whole process.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, a comment. This, I, I'm not sure, I go by, and I've been going by for the last thirty years, uh, Mass General Law Chapter Eighty-seven, and I really hang my hat on, uh, you know, other than the fact that you and I, you and Planning Board and I have to uh, entertain any requests from the public to remove a tree, a public shade tree with a hearing, and it's, you know, that's all uh, spelled out, and, and uh, that's fine. I have no problems with, with um, that and/or any reference to that in this uh, regulation. The key for me, and what I, what I um, don't want to see changed, I guess is the best way to put it, is, uh, in all the sections, section five is eight, Chapter Eighty-seven, section five, it says, cutting down, trimming, or removal of bushes and small trees. It goes on to say that only the tree warden or is designated, or is, uh, what do they call it, deputy? And that, that refers to trees, uh, small and inch and a half, but, but as further, that further down, it says, um, nothing contained in this chapter shall prevent the trimming and cutting or removal of any tree which endangers persons traveling on a highway. And that's ninety percent, well, ninety nine, hundred percent, I do. Other, well, I mentioned, ninety-nine percent of the others is answering um, about, uh, people who have trees that they think are theirs or whatever, and they have to measure the rights of way, et cetera, et cetera. But the, the physical part of my job is basically the removal of dead, dead or hazardous trees. And so I, you know, I don't know if this, this uh, proposed um, scenic roads, uh, was it one forty-five ninety-one, um, applies to that, or impairs my ability to do that. Uh, I will, I will, uh, whatever, that's, that's, that's my comment.
No, I think, I think that's a very valid comment, sir, and, and Beth, um, would we be able to share that comment with um, with Adam in regards to uh, the tree warden? I think that, you know, and, and, and try to get some clarity on exactly what we're looking at here?
Yep, absolutely, yep. Yeah.
I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather, you know, work through this process with you than to just, you know, oppose it.
Yep, and this is exactly why we wanted to have this, we, we wanted to have this forum, is to, to make sure that we had public comment on this.
I don't want there to be any conflict between the, the bylaws, the, the general laws adhering to for the last eons, and, and, and your new regulations, although there, there's some parts of the regulations that are, you know, that are fine, as far as the, there was a bit of a confusion, and different paragraphs talk about different fees and, and stuff, and penalties, and I think it's, it's good to have it clarified in one document, although people will still refer back to some of the older, I mean, I've got, right now, I've got probably three um, well, not, three copies of the general laws, but there's, there's an old one. And then, then you, then you got the duties of the tree one, which is, uh, is it Chapter Forty, whatever it is. And uh, so there's a lot of language written about it, so this would be good to have some clarification, but I think that it, it doesn't, it shouldn't conflict with some of the uh, the, the parts of the bylaw that, or the laws, rather. You know, so yeah, I could, uh.
Okay, maybe set up a conversation, a phone call um, with Town Council and, and Mr. Pico.
Yeah, sure, that'd be cool. I think I met him, I don't know if I met him on time or not. Adam, is that his first name?
Adam.
Adam.
Is it? Adam, yeah. Yeah, I met, I met with him to uh, uh, about what, what the actual um, the responsibility of the tree warden in, in relation to all rights of way in town, not just the rights of way along the roadway. And we went around all, probably all these bylaws and, and laws that, that you, you're working with, and he, you know, determined it was just the streets, not any, any town right of way, like drainage easements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so, yeah, so I, I don't know him, I met him, I, I know him a little bit, but I'm, uh, either, I don't know if you could meet with him on a Zoom or.
We can. Um, actually, uh, Don, he holds office hours, so I can uh, set up a time for us. Um, it would be the last Tuesday of the month.
Cool.
Great, that's perfect, because it's still within that window of time that we can change and edit this.
Okay. What do you have to have this submitted by?
Uh, the, we shouldn't be doing any more editing to this until, I mean, after the sixteenth. That's, because it's going to go to publish for a town meeting.
Well, then you would, would you have enough time, what do you say, the sixteenth?
There'll be enough time.
Yeah, the uh, Town Council's office hours are the fourth Tuesday of the month. So if I get us an appointment, we have a conversation, any kind of edits can be done right there. Yeah, he's very, very adept.
Okay.
Yep, he can, he's, he's very good. He'll whip up the changes that, that is needed. Um, but I appreciate your comments on this, because this is, our, our focus was on stone walls and not on, on trees. So I'm, I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you gave us this feedback, because this will, this will, you know, have a better, I think it'll be a more solid document.
I mean, if there's a logical reason for some of the changes, and, you know, I might agree with them, but, but I don't, uh, you know, just eliminating references to the tree warden, I mean, that's fine for the stone walls, if that's all this was meant to be.
Yeah.
But, but anyhow, we can resolve it.
Yep, okay, good.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing with no votes being taken tonight until April fifth.
I'll make a motion to continue the scenic uh, road review until April fifth.
At seven o'clock, Beth?
Uh, April fifth, I'm sorry, I think we have, there's a public hearing at seven, on April fifth, already. So um, six forty-five? Do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Forty-five?
I'll second.
Hey, any further discussion on the motion to postpone until April fifth at six forty-five? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Uh, Carol Hofstetter's, yes.
Beth Sexton, Duranian, yes?
Laura Schifrin. Laura Shifrin, yes. Thank you all very much. The public hearing is closed at seven twenty-two.
Nice zooming you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, I believe we are now at three point six, the Townsend draft inter-agency permitting application, chapter forty-three D. Beth, how are we on that application?
Actually, still, still working on that, not, not a lot of progress. I think that I would have more by the eighth, the fifth on that one.
Okay. Can I just ask you, are we, from the comments that I've seen come through to the board, are we removing the Squana Cook School?
Based on the correspondence, that would, I would leave that up to you. If you want to wait until Chairman McNally joins you, or if you want to go ahead and make a motion, that's entirely up to you. But correspondence has been shared with the board, so I think you all are aware.
Well, I'm just, from what we've seen, are we able to submit this? Is it going to hold up the applicant, we can't hold up the application, it has to be submitted by a certain date? It does not have to be submitted by a date?
The application can go in at any time. The only, the only time sensitive portion of it is the warrant article. So I guess you, you could easily remove it, I mean, even on town meeting floor, you could remove that particular parcel, you know, as a priority development site, but you want to make a decision ahead of time, I think it makes sense. So the board would pick that up and, you know, choose to remove it from the warrant article. It doesn't affect anything else, you know. Haven't done the application for it yet, so.
Okay, so how does the board feel about that? Because that, or, I don't know, did, Karen, did you work on this?
No, it's Kayla, yeah.
Okay, so.
Would you like anyone by the next meeting? And that might be a good idea.
May.
Yes, and in the, in the meantime, can we think about, or is it possible for us to, if we came up with another parcel by the fifth, by the meeting of the fifth, and removed that one to insert another one? Is that within our privy to do? Or does that have to go through Kayla and MRPC?
Thought there is, it's already been mapped.
It's already, yeah.
So that would be required, it would require.
It would have to be mapped, it would be, okay. Okay, so, Jazz?
The, my thoughts are this, I believe, or I, I was under the belief that there was communication by the town administrator with the school board or superintendent in regards to this property. You and I have had a conversation with the town administrator almost a year ago in regards to this property. Excuse me, I got a cough. We are not looking for a decision by the school board. What we are looking for is the ability to place this on a, a priority, designated as a priority site for a possible future development, not that we're going to do it, not that it's in our planning to do it, but that it would be in the purview of, of the town, that if they decide to vacate that building within the next twenty years, we already have it designated as the ability to have, to take it over and to build this particular site. I honestly don't believe that, according to their letter, they said that they, they wanted to wait until the current feasibility study had gone through. My comment to that is, why, would it, would it be possible for us to also talk with the feasibility company and, or whoever's doing the feasibility study and ask them, you know, present to them why, the reason that we're going to do this and see if they in turn find it, that it's a good thing for us to continue with this and, and move forward? I don't think we should drop this. I, I, I don't believe that if we do drop it, it's going to take us a while to get this back in, 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 I mean,
Okay.
I, I just think that, that we need to take some action on this.
So, I mean, some of what we read was that they, the school committee did not want to do anything or sign anything until after the Collins study was done?
Yes, they said they didn't want to commit to anything. And, and we're not asking them to commit to anything other than to allow us to put this as designated as a priority site. That's all we're asking them to do.
But they would have to sign the application?
Yes, to allow us to put that on there, yes.
And so my question is, maybe to Beth, or we can, to Kayla on the fifth, if she'd like to come. And the question would be, how long, because we, we have the three others that are on there are willing to sign, knowing they may never go forward, but that their sites have been acceptable. But from what I'm hearing is that the school committee will not sign, even though they're not committing, they're, they don't have to commit to doing something in the future.
I don't think they understand that. I, I fully believe that the discussion should have been had two months ago, six months ago, eight months ago, to, to allow them to have discussions about it so that they could make a decision. I just feel that they're protecting, you know, an interest, as opposed to not really having a full understanding of exactly what we're asking them for.
Okay, well, I mean, I feel as you do, it was sad, they seemed to be so surprised by this when we met with them.
I, I was under the understanding that they had already been, that, that at least the superintendent knew that the housing authority was interested in the property and that the town wanted to, to make sure that if they, in, in five years or eight years decide that they don't need that facility anymore, that we are prepared to take that, because the town does not need another property that they can't handle unless they've properly planned for it.
Right. And neither does school, which is why they're having the study done.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so. Okay. Chapter forty-three D warrant article report to the town.
I'm going to cover that, I think you're going to.
Yeah, okay.
And might I just ask, since we have Karen here with us, she's here tonight to, we, we had gone talked, discussed the MOU and the agreement for the RSD, so I just, you know, kind of, if you had any questions for her, you know, you could ask her, you should all.
You broke up, I didn't hear everything you said.
Oh, sorry. The agreement for the DLTA RSD has been, I distributed it to the board. Everyone should have had it, a copy of it. And Karen is here, she prepared the agreement. We worked together on it, and I just wanted to make sure that the board didn't have any questions or if everything works okay. I'll go ahead and have, I'll ask the town administrator to sign it, and we'll move forward. Did you have a chance to review it?
I did not, was it something that was reviewed by, and I apologize, reviewed by Adam?
No, typically we do not, not, not for the DLTA. Yeah, because we do it every year, so typically no.
Karen, did you want to speak to it?
Yes, please. So I had put together the scope of services with a timeline to end when typical DLTA applications end is December thirty-first. Beth indicated that the master plan committee wanted to be completed around August. So I moved the timeline up, and that's what Beth had sent out to you, was a revised
Okay.
scope. What I thought I was coming tonight was to talk to Cam Craven. I don't know if she's here to do an update, it's on the agenda, so I thought maybe she was going to be here.
Yeah.
To try and, to try and get out of them exactly what maps they need. Until we know that, we can't hurry it along.
Correct. And part of the reason why I was kind of glad to see Karen here was that I was going to outline that as part of the, Lori, just to fill you in on exactly what had happened, Beth and I, I had written the original DLTA agreement, and then Beth and I had talked about it. And my major concern is that the, we, we have the twenty to sixteen maps that we've agreed upon. There is also some hours that are discussion. And the discussions are, I, I want to be very clear on this, that MRPC will be discussing already written chapters to fit the maps. MRPC is not here to write any chapters. I want to be very, very clear about that. That's part of the reason why I thought maybe we could get everybody together to, so we have that understanding. Am I speaking out of turn, Beth, is that what we were looking at, right?
My understanding that this is, that the planner services are to review written chapters.
Correct.
And not write them.
Correct, and making sure that the written chapter, that we have the right maps for the written chapter, right?
Oh, oh.
Not writing.
No, I understood that we weren't writing, that we were just here for our expert advice, and did we write this correctly? That kind of thing.
Yeah.
So you want us to read the chapters and decide, and you want us to decide which map should go in there?
No, 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 they're going to tell you what maps that they're looking for.
When?
We're all, yeah, exactly.
That's what I was.
Yeah, that's what we all want to know.
Okay. I mean, there, there's sort of a standard set that would go in a master plan, but every town's different, and that's why we wanted to, even if they just give us a couple to start on. But you can, you know, I, Beth suggested I listen to the, your last meeting where Kim was there. And, and I did go back and listen to the meeting, and she was talking about, she wasn't sure what we have, what kind of library of data we have. So we, you can tell her, we have every layer that's available in Mass GIS. We also do Townsend's assessors mapping, so we have all the data you could possibly need. So whatever they want, I believe we can provide.
Thank you, we did send that email.
If, Karen, if I can kind of pick your brain, brain a little bit, you said that there's like a standard that, that master plans use, roughly?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're talking about housing, so you put a map of where affordable, you know. You're talking about this, so you put a map of this, you know. Like the economic development chapter, you know, if you talk about forty-three D, you could put the forty-three D map in there. I mean, if you're talking about open space, you can put that map in there. You're talking about natural resources, you put that map in there, you know.
So these have to be written before the, the map is decided on what, what's supposed to be in there. So I'm trying to get the horse in front of the cart, and it doesn't seem like there's a cart to, for the horse to.
So how complete are the chapters?
No, I, we have one chapter that was.
We've only seen one, and, and it's, it's not complete.
No, there are no references to any maps in it. It's the water chapter section, but we have nothing.
So in the water, water chapter, that it looks like it's on your agenda, there's no maps in there or?
No reference, any maps in there, no.
From what we got from MRPC, and not, I misspoke, from master plan committee.
There's also a economic development piece that was done by a, an outside agency, which, there are some questions in regards to citing some of their, their reference material, but there's, they, they have, you know, places where they say a map of this would be good, a map of that would be good, or whatever. You know, like a map of downtown and a map of, of, you know, that kind of stuff. So I think the economic development has, has the most written, but.
So did, did they start from scratch? So I know that they were working on this in twenty nineteen, or eighteen, they started in like eighteen nineteen?
Yes.
And we were, MRPC was a thing at that time?
Yes.
And then it got, for whatever reason, it didn't move forward. And they're reinvigorating the committee and picking up where they left off. Is that how I understand it? Okay.
Fine.
Well, you know, we're here when they're ready to do it. I mean, I'm, I'm reticent to sign a, have my executive director sign a contract that says we're going to complete the work by August, when, you know, we don't have the list of what we would need to complete that.
Right.
And I don't want to overburden Kayla. I mean, every DLTA project we get has some element of mapping in it, and I don't want to overload them in a time crunch.
Right. Understood.
So Madam Chair, may I suggest that the master plan committee is meeting on the twenty-fourth, Beth, right? Which is when?
Wednesday.
I have three twenty-five, is it the twenty?
I have three twenty-five.
I do too, I have three twenty-five at seven fifteen.
And that's a Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kim just texted a confirmation, it's Thursday.
May, may I suggest that I will attend the master plan committee meeting on Thursday? And I will, is, Karen, when, when is it? Would we, would you want the, how soon do we need to get the information to you? Like what maps that we need so that we can sign this contract?
Right, I think.
I mean, we can sign the contract. I just wanted to be clear to you guys who applied that we're not being held to that August date if something goes awry.
Yep.
Okay.
Got right in there, I mean.
Can you put in the contract that the date is subject to receiving the information you need from the master plan committee in order to complete by this date?
Yeah, I can work with Beth on that language tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be good. Yeah, I, I, I would too. And, and we, we need to get master plan done, it's been, it's been well over.
Two years.
Twenty-five years?
Yes.
One, you're right.
Yeah. And, and my concern, Karen, is that these chapters are going to match up with the other things that we have in the Pike, like the housing production plan, and, and, and the water department is doing a, a, a master plan for the water department. So we want all of these, I know, we want, the energy committee has a wonderful, they're planning ahead on what they need as well. So I, I just want to make sure that we have all our ducks in the row here.
Okay.
Documents and, and are being worked on and, and updated, as well as the plans for the open space and recreation.
Exactly, that's another one too, that.
Veronica actually emailed me and asked when the third round of DLTA was, was due, so that she could submit that.
Yeah, it looked like that was more, the focus of that was not as much. Did I get that wrong? Wasn't that more focused on COVID and social justice projects, or did I read that wrong?
What she said is she wanted an open space in recreation plan.
Would it be applicable? Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, that would be great.
And, and just FYI, John was unavailable to come tonight, and that, that's why you see me. I'm not sure if he's going to be the planner on the, on the, I'm still trying to work out how much I can actually work with you.
Oh, great, hopefully a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to work with a town that I actually know stuff about.
You could probably write the report from scratch.
Yes, in the past, we missed you, Karen.
Yeah, I miss you guys too. It's only a certain few that I miss, but. Well, this is being recorded, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
The tru- the truth will set you free.
So Karen, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Oh, thank you for your time.
Oh, my.
I'll talk to you tomorrow, Beth.
Okay, thanks, Karen. Take care.
All right, bye.
Bye.
Would this be considered, um, I mean, we didn't really touch upon 3.1. Um, and I had some questions in regards to um other facets in regards to the master plan.
Well, we didn't, oh, okay, um.
I texted.
I did, um, I mean, I did like announce it, and because Kim wasn't here and there was no update, that's why I went on to the next one. But uh, I'm happy to go back to it, Chaz. Would you like to say something?
I, well, there's a couple of things that I'd like to, I'd like to um bring to the board's attention. I would like to know if the um, the consultant was paid for the economic development piece. Um, and if that consultant was not paid for that particular portion, uh, would the um, uh, I, I would like to, to somehow um, uh, insert the planning board in that particular process to get them paid. Then work out the details of what they can do, if they can do it that way. But I feel that that particular company has gone on long enough without getting paid for the work that they've done. Um, and it, and speaking for myself, as far as the report that I saw that they had written outside of the citing, you know, cer- in certain places, I really do feel that it should be paid.
Okay, so um, you're gonna attend the master plan meeting on Thursday? Do you want to broach them about that when you are with them? And see if you can get an answer from them to bring back to us uh for the full board to discuss on April 5th?
I can do that.
So let me ask a question. They didn't have a contract?
There was.
Second economic development plan?
The, the um, I apologize for pausing, but I don't want to misspoke, misspeak, because there's, there's been past issues on this, Carol. Um, the master plan committee went directly to the Board of Selectmen to get this company hired. Uh, the planning board was not consulted uh in regards to this report. Therefore, um, the, the contract, I'm assuming, I haven't seen the formal contract, but it was between the town and FXM. Um, because as a committee, I don't think the master plan committee can, can do a contract.
Oh, okay. I actually read the development. I thought it was actually pretty well-written.
I did too.
Economic development plan. I, I liked it. So have they been looking, have they been asking to get paid?
Uh, yes, they've actually um, um, had approached us. Uh, the chairman and myself and uh the chairman of the master plan and another member met uh sometime in the fall. And um, uh, we had asked them, you know, they're, they haven't paid, and, and that particular organization is saying that they are going to take action against us because we're not being paid. Um, and it was agreed that the master plan will try to work out something with FXM. This was in the fall, Beth. Do you know exactly when that was? I, I just remember sitting in the gazebo and there were brown leaves around me.
I think it's fall, sounds about.
So I'm saying October, you know, maybe, maybe first of November, uh, and here it is March. I'm not sure if they have talked to them. I'm not sure if there was been any communication. I know a letter had gone out, uh, according to what I heard in one of the uh master plan meetings. I personally feel that we need to pay this company, and then we can deal with the rest of it.
I agree with you. You know, we do need to pay the company.
Um, when you say we.
The town.
And wouldn't that be?
This Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen.
So then I would like to make a motion to ask a representative from the planning board to present this to the Board of Selectmen to get the um contract paid.
I'll, I'll, I will entertain a motion for uh Chaz to represent the planning board to the selectmen regarding the payment of this bill to the contract they signed.
I'll second it.
Well, entertain the motion.
Oh, you want to entertain, oh, that was a long.
Make a motion.
I know. Uh, make a motion to have Chaz uh present to the planning board, uh, to the ta- uh, selectmen to um pay FXM associates for develop, uh, for producing the Townsend Economic Development Strategy.
And I second that.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion on that motion? Thank you, Chaz, for the explanation. And I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hofstetter, yes.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Yes.
Beth, would you be able to set that up for me, please?
Sure. Get you an appointment on the next agenda, um, uh, the next Board of Selectmen's agenda.
Whenever they, they can fit me in, sure.
Absolutely.
Anything else, Chaz, under 3.1?
No, I'm, I'm okay.
And I'm gonna move us to 3.8, Safe Roots to School, update, Chaz.
Okay, um, we have uh been going back and forth. Um, I, I've been working with Selectmen, uh, Cal, and in regards to this. Because of the way uh the COVID situation has been and opening school and all of that kind of stuff. Uh, our next date, we've moved it off. We're gonna be uh meeting this week. Um, we're gonna meet next on April for, uh, April 8th at 1:00 PM. And at that time, we're gonna be talking with the two principals and the assistant principal. And I think there, you know, we'll have a decision on what they want to do at that point.
Okay. Are you also gonna report on 3.9, the walkability and bikeability study?
There's really nothing been going on. It's gonna stay on the agenda. Um, so we're, right now, it's, we're just, MRPC is processing what data they have.
So.
Be a recurring agenda item.
I, okay, so I heard, um, so Mi- Chaz, maybe you can enlighten me, because I heard something about one of these going before the historic commission? And the reas- wasn't received very well?
That was, that was something different.
Neither one of these?
No, this is, yeah.
This is, excuse me, this was completely different. Um, this, uh, what we were doing in this particular one was um, we had made an agreement to do from downtown all the way to the high school. And we had um asked to add from the common to the um public safety. And um, with, with what we're talking about here, um, they uh MRPC said they're not gonna add to the, the already accepted contracts. But there are other things that they're doing that they're gonna try to incorporate what we're asking for.
Okay. That had nothing to do with the historic commission?
No.
Well, oh, what, what's on our agenda?
Correct. The, uh, what was in front of the historic uh commission was uh for signage for um, this is part of the COVID relief to get people outside.
Oh, okay.
And it, and it had to do with walkability and bikeability as well. But it was um, the um, the people that are writing the grant, which is a, a combination of, of boards and, and individuals presented to the historic district and um, the areas for signage and, and um, uh, they wanted to put uh bike racks and uh you are here signs and um QC poles. You know, you put a pole down, it has a QC, and you just put your cell phone up to it, and it'll pop up with the map of whatever the historic trail is and all of that kind of stuff. But the uh, apparently the, the, there were seven items that were asked for um, uh, to approve signage uh at the, in the town common. And the majority were, were voted down. Um, and I think.
Historic commission.
Correct, but there's, there's still some questions in regards to, um, you know, uh, uh, if it's not gonna be directly in the downtown historic district, they may move it a street over and still continue with everything.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that explanation. And then, so that brings us to four correspondents, and it's you again.
Yeah. It's the Chaz Show tonight.
The Chaz Show.
Um. Uh, Beth, on we, the 4.1, is this all the ones that you, you sent me, or those are different than what we have on the agenda? MVP Region Coordinator Online Meeting. Um, this is what we just talked about, right? You're on, you're on mute, Beth.
Sorry, 4.2 is an announcement that had already been sent to the board, but um, I just wanted to make sure it was on the agenda and made sure we noticed it was there. The deadline, I think, is today for, for this one. But um, yeah, that, oh, and I, and I just wanted to note, my, I, my memory was correct that for this particular round, COVID-19 relief slash recovery activities, activities that fall under the below priority categories are eligible. So this round is going to be focused on COVID-19 relief, as I did, you know, so I, I did read that, and I wasn't having a deeper moment.
Do you apply for that?
We do not, I don't think.
We did not apply in the third round?
Well, no, not, there's nothing that the planning board, to my knowledge, has that.
Yeah, we didn't have anything in the, in the, in the hopper waiting for this, so.
Oh.
This is COVID-19.
Would that have been us, or would that have been the Board of Selectmen?
It goes to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, this is a Board of Health too, potentially would have been here. You know, COVID-19 relief, recovery, economic development, definitely. So uh, but we don't have an economic development, you know.
Yeah, plan to give them.
So I don't know if there are thoughts on that, you know, in terms of that. But it's the same categories. It's still planning ahead for housing, planning ahead for growth, supporting the community compact, including regionalization, supporting the housing choice initiative. But it is the whole theme, thank you, Kendra, of COVID-19 relief. So, well, thanks.
Well, I, I, can I, can I kind of expound on what you just said, Beth, in regards to the housing choice? Because I had attended and um, something this weekend is because I did attend a, a webinar um for the uh MMA in regards to housing choice. There's been um several different, um, Laurie, this was something that you had talked about that the governor is changing legislation from a super majority to a simple majority um for a lot of things. A lot of things are actually moving forward. And part of the housing choice um initiative was something that I was asked um by a former selectman uh to look into for the town. Um, I did a report. I don't know if you remember, because I also presented it to the housing authority that I did this for the town. But to get on the housing uh, this, this, it's, it's a priority grant list. It's really what it is. We have to meet certain criteria, and the criteria has to do with having um a, a up-to-date ADA um survey. Having, you know, all the things that we are trying to push to get done right now. If we get on this uh housing choice list, we are, uh, we get priority grants that come up um so that we get first crack at them, um because we are already on this priority list. And it's something that I feel um that I talked about in the housing authority, but in the planning board, I think it's very, very important because with, there's issues that we've talked about that we want to delve into that I think is gonna be able to, to help us move forward in our planning efforts.
And uh, along with that, one of the, the things that's mentioned here in terms of support, of supporting the housing choice initiative is to have best practices that allow for compact housing development. And I know that Courtney came and gave us that presentation on pocket neighborhoods, and I don't know how that could all tie in, or if it can tie in.
Well, that, you just tipped my hand, but that's why I asked Courtney to come and present that to the planning board, because I knew that that was, that piece was coming through, that legislation was coming through.
Uh-huh. So um, as we're speaking, is that something that we could apply in this DLTA RSD grant round? Would it be um some zoning bylaw, you know, that would allow that sort of pocket neighborhood development? Compact development um under this DLTA round, where, again, I think it kind of falls in, you know, it's definitely a priority category. And it could be somewhat related to COVID-19 relief, recovering. I don't know. Uh, and maybe not, but.
Well, I, I also believe that when, when our chair Lance brought into um, to, to perspective, for me anyway, there are several parcels of land that are um, um, Laurie, I don't know what the real estate term is, but they develop the front, and there's, there's backlots that, that could be developed.
Hammerhead lots?
Hammerhead lots, yeah. Um, I'm thinking that if we had zoning law that would be able to accept hammerhead lots to, to, to increase some of the housing that we have as well, would that be able to be something that we could look at?
I wonder. I mean, I'm wondering if um MRPC, I wish Karen was still here. You know what I mean? We could ask her.
Um, could you shoot her an email and ask her tomorrow, whatever? Um, because I don't have the zoning bylaws in front of me, but hammerhead lots were allowed many years ago because we have them. They exist in town now. Um, they have a lot more actually in Pepperell than they have here.
Right, but the, from my knowledge, this is, I'm, this is pulling out of my head what Lance was saying is that the frontage that was allowed some of the had lots that are here in town don't meet the frontage requirement. But if we're going to improve a pocket neighborhood, we would have to decrease the, the, the frontage allowance, I think.
For ha- hammerheads or one that you, you know, put in the back, uh, a really, probably a good example of where that was messed around with is Jonathan Lane in West Townsend. Because those, that cul-de-sac of homes, they all have two acres of land each. And they have 200 feet of frontage, but it's on New Fitch Road. So that sits up on a hill, the land goes all around the houses that are up there. But to me, to be compliant with the two acre, 200 foot frontage zoning requirements, that's how that development was, the plan of that was done. So most of the land is not usable because it's all downhill. And the frontage is not frontage on Jonathan Lane, but on New Fitchburg Road, where it goes down the hill. So there are ways um, that developers try to work within the bylaws even though the bylaws are extremely restrictive. And I think that the state is looking for us to have a little more common sense and help development take place. And this is not to open the floodgates. This is to help ease the housing shortage. Which should have been, just when you don't increase your budget each year, let's say by 2%. So that it covers those core things that always increase. Your insurance costs, your real estate taxes, your heat, you know, water. If you don't. If you don't increase your budget to absorb that, you're gonna fall behind. So if you don't increase your housing counts each year to make up for the demand, you're gonna fall behind. And so that's happened for 40 years now. So they're in a crisis that they're, they're not talking a lot about, say, in the media or the news, but the market is reacting to what is happening. Reality is reacting to what's happening, and that's not gonna go away.
And my major concern is that I'm, I'm a planner and I'm an organizer, and Lori, you know that. I, I need to make sure that we have a plan going forward. And, and unfortunately, in the housing area, this, this, the town doesn't have anything.
Correct.
And, uh, my, my fear is that, um, with this new legislation that's coming through, and that's why I've been watching it very carefully, if these towns are not relaxing some of their zoning bylaws, the state's gonna step in and relax them for them. And that's kind of what's happening with this, dropping it from a, 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 a majority to a simple, uh, to a simple majority. You know what I mean? To a, from a two-thirds vote to a, you know, it's, the, these regulations are gonna happen, uh, moving forward. Um, so part of the reason why I had asked to have Courtney come here was to talk about pop, pocket neighborhoods, because I knew that this was coming down the Pike with, with, uh, with the governors rolling out with new, um, you know, housing choice.
Yeah.
So to, to be able to, to accommodate that, we need to be educated in regards to what's coming down the Pike, Pike for the, uh, for the legislation. And then more importantly, look at what our, our zoning bylaws are, and seeing what we can tweak right now to be able to, to match up with what's coming down, so that we don't get caught, you know, you know, in the dust of what's going on. You know, there's, there's other developments, not huge developments, but there's other things that are smart, small-scale, um, you know, not, not getting into density problems or anything like that, not overbuilding. It's, there are these small projects that each town is doing. They're increasing their, their, um, financial infrastructure by creating more housing, but doing it in a smart way so that, you know, they're increasing the revenue to town as far as taxes are concerned. But they're not, you know, uh, uh, creating problems with density, you know, they're not, they're not overbuilding or anything like that. Um, and, you know, this personal, this is my thought, is we, we, we gotta do something. And, you know, I, I would much rather, you know, worry about the pennies and nickels and dimes, because once we have the dollars, those are gonna count themselves. So that's my two cents worth on it.
Okay.
Um, I have, I, I do have, um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Lori. Um, I do have three notices from other towns.
Please.
Um, the Town of Shirley Planning Board, um, this is to conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, March 24th, regarding an application submitted, uh, by David E. Ross Associates for their client, M3D Realty Trust. Um, the application is for a special permit in connection with, uh, 3.8.1(c)(2) of the Town of Shirley, uh, protective zoning bylaws, as well as waiver. The property is on Great Road. Um, and again, that's March 24th, uh, 2021, 6 o'clock. It's a virtual. Uh, and if you are interested in that, you can get in contact with Beth, our administrator, and she can give you the, the details. Um, Town of Groton. Um, this one was very interesting, Beth. Um, this is dated February 17th, but the meeting was the day. It says March 11th.
Ah, did I send you an old one? Did I ask?
But we got it on the 15th. March 15th is when it's stamped into town, but the letter is dated February 17th.
Wow, interesting.
But, um, the, the reason why I wanted to bring that up is because this is a project located in Groton, um, on, um, um, Assessor's Parcel 226-2. And it will result in a subdivision of the existing 45-acre property on the westerly side of Longley Road and the southerly side of, and Hill Road into 13 lots. Each lot with age-restricted two-unit townhouses, 26 total units, on two private roadways, as shown in the plan entitled "The Village at Shepley Hill, Sand Hill Road and Longley Road."
You know, that might have been a continued public hearing, and that's.
What I'm thinking, too.
Yeah, because I think I, I have heard about that. And if anybody wants to know, um, all the documents that the planning board has received are on the website. So just for your own information, if you want to review those, um, there's an extensive library on the project.
But, um, that is something that we're actually talking about. This is exactly what we're looking for, for, for Townsend. The Zoning Board of Appeals for Groton is, um, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 7th, 2021, at 6:30 PM via Zoom to convene the hearing for the application of Brian Gannon, um, of Buxwood Drive in Littleton, for a special permit to allow the reconstruction of a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. And again, that, that is on the website, Beth. That information for, for all of that. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So seeing no other business to come before us, I'll announce that our next scheduled meeting is April 5th, 2021, via Zoom, at 6:30 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second that motion.
Okay. I will have a roll call vote to adjourn at 8:09 PM.
Carol Hofstas, yes?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes?
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you, Beth, very much.
Yes.
Thank you heartily. Appreciate you always. And have a good night, everyone.
All right.
Thanks, ma'am. Have fun.